I call the meeting to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my pleasure to welcome you to the first meeting of the Board of Commissioners for 2020 and remind you that we are keeping both a written record and a visual record. Our first item on the agenda today is awards and recognition. And it's my pleasure to deal with that particular issue. The employee of the quarter for October, November, and December of 2019 is Stacy Burchard. He's probably wondering to this point why this large contingent of family, colleagues, and et cetera are present here today. But let me read a couple of things. The Umatilla County Employee Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who served the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. In that spirit, the committee wishes to share with you the nomination from peers that warranted this recognition. This last year, the DA's office was mandated to begin recording grand jury. Stacy was made the grand jury clerk and among all her other duties, she has been instrumental in making the changes to jury recordation seamless. Moreover, she handles grand jury and all the fires that come with it with grace and patience. She coordinates with witnesses, law enforcement, and multiple schedules on a daily basis. She sets up electronic appearances and makes sure people are properly served. In short, she goes above and beyond to make sure that the process runs smoothly from the very beginning until the very end, and always with a smile. She is just amazing. With this award comes a certificate and also comes with eight hours of paid time off whenever she chooses to do so, plus a Umatilla County Yeti mug. And I might add to this, while I'm sure the DA's office is very proud of Stacy, so too are the Commissioners because for a good part of the last year, she was working in our office almost more than she was upstairs. And so everything I read here isn't just words that are coming to us from that office, but rather things that we in the Commissioner's office had an opportunity to witness personally. And we would have made this nomination probably if the DA's office wouldn't.
And we have her free parking.
I think she gets a parking spot, too. Oh, yes. And you get this very special parking place as well. With that, I would ask the Commissioners to join me in front and we'll make the presentation. Do you have time? Would you like to have the certificate with your family and staff? Rare opportunity. There'll be no additional charge for having us in the background.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations again. Okay. Do we have any minutes? We have December 18th, 2019.
Chairman, I move approval of the December 18th, 2019 minutes.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Additions to the agenda? There aren't any. We will move the fair up to item three since they are here. Okay? All right. First business item on the agenda is the election of officers for 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Order BCC 2020-1 with the appointment of Commissioner Schaefer as board chair and Commissioner Murdock as vice chair.
Second. Discussions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Well, there we go. If you would like to read a list of the accomplishments of the county during the past year, I would encourage you to read either the Pendleton Record or the Valley Herald where the county column is published. We have had, I think, a rather extraordinary year, but we will not use this forum for a lengthy speech. So with that, congratulations, Commissioner Schaefer.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your leadership in the previous year.
Anybody who is visiting with anybody by phone, in person, or whatever, anyone who has a grave concern, they're upset, problems, or anything else, please direct them to Chairman Schaefer.
Should have seen that train coming. Okay, so audit report. Cameron.
Good morning. My name is Cameron Anderson. I'm with Barnett &amp; Morrell. We are contracted with the county to perform the financial statement audit of the county. And I'm just here to report that the audit has been completed and you have copies of the audit report that was filed with the state of Oregon and will soon be filed with the federal government in the next couple of weeks. I'm happy to report that the financial statements, in our opinion, are materially correct. That's what we say on page seven or eight of the audit report. Six to eight is our audit report. Our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material specs on the modified CASB basis financial position. So that's good. That's what we want. And also, we did not have any findings or internal control matters that need to be brought to the board or anything like that. Go through the basic financial statements just real quick. Page 10 is the statement of net position, which is essentially the county's balance sheet. Total net position was about $91 million. Of that $91 million, $61 million is fixed assets less related debt. So that's good. Page 11 is basically the income statement on a government-wide. So basically, all of the government combined into one statement. Statement of net position went up by $728,000 during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. Page 12 is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So the county works, basically, we have pots of funds that keep track of various things. We have three major funds, and then we have other governmental funds where we combine all the smaller funds into one column on the financial statements. All of the detail of that is included in the 150-some odd pages of the report. I'll just make a note, the general fund ended with cash and investments of about $6.5 million. If you go over to page 14, you can see that was an increase of about $800,000. Public Works, about $6.3 million. They also had an increase of about $800,000. And the PERS Reserve is up to about $5 million. That was an increase of about $1.5 million. That's where the county is putting the payment in lieu of taxes that we receive from the federal government for future PERS that you guys have committed to that. So overall, the net change in fund balance for the county went up about $3.4 million, leaving fund balances at the end of the year about $29 million. The rest of the report is various note disclosures that are required by accounting procedures and policies. But overall, I'd like to thank Robert and his staff for their work in helping us get through the audit. It was relatively smooth and nothing of note this year. Any questions?
No, I had the privilege of sitting through the exit conference with Cameron and Robert. And while this seems almost routine and certainly something that isn't rising to a crescendo, I think it's quite important to remember we have a $90 million budget. And I certainly would add to the commendation for our CFO, Robert Paul, and his staff in terms of a report of this nature. There's lots of organizations that would only dream of this.
Right.
So I think we should acknowledge their work throughout 12 months in producing this audit. And I would move to adopt the audit report.
Second.
Robert, I also want to echo the comments. Congratulations, your staff, and you've done a phenomenal job this year. So thank you very much for that. Cameron, thank you very much. We've got a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move up the fair board. Is that what you said, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and bring the fair board up. Is that what we're?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Angie, the fair coordinator. And this is Steve Wallace, our new fair board chairman. And Commissioner Elfring thought it would be a good idea if we showed up today since you guys are hopefully going to appoint our new board-elect member. Did you want to talk about how we came up with that?
Yeah.
There was an interview committee of three. It was myself, Commissioner Elfring, and ex-fair board chairman Lucas Wagner. And we interviewed three applicants. And we chose Mike Engelbrecht of Hermiston as the successful applicant based on his involvement in the community and several different community organizations. He had a lengthy volunteer history in our area and other areas in the county. So he's a local business owner in Hermiston. He owns, I'm sorry, he runs Barrett Business Solutions for the region. And we've actually used some of his temporary staff this past year for the fair. So we have a good working relationship with him. He has other relationships with different board members who supported our decision when they found out he was our selection.
Excellent.
Although I don't have the names of the other people who interviewed, all candidates were good candidates for the position and have gone on record as being available and wishing to volunteer for the fair. And that was a good sign. Give them a good opportunity.
Yes, the other applicants, as Commissioner Elfring stated, would love to be more involved in the fair and get a feel for, watch our fair board and what we do during fair and get a feel for reapplying if positions should open up in the future.
Perfect. Is there a motion?
I think before the motion, we should also congratulate our new fair board chair on his rapid rise.
Yeah, that was pretty quick.
I'm moved to accept the appointment.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Steve. Okay, at this time, we'll move into a public hearing for the fee ordinance amendment.
Second of two. The second hearing?
Is this the second hearing?
Yes, this is the second reading of the ordinance.
Good morning. Matt Kenny, Umatilla County Public Works Survey Supervisor. So as you guys said, second reading for the fee ordinance amendment. This is for the county surveyor position. We've been in discussions regarding the county surveyor position, staff, and the overall organization of the position. In that review, we determined that the county surveyor collected a set of fees in addition to his salary. We are going to be removing the fees. He's still going to collect his base salary. And they'll be in addition to the deputy county surveyor. In that process, there are certain fees that are incurred that we didn't have before. So we took a close look at our current fee schedule and compared it with other counties of similar size. Virtually, we determined that what our current fee schedule was was pretty substantially lower than a lot of those other counties. So the proposal is to up the fees to be similar to those other counties, something that's a little bit more productive and will provide the adequate income for the county surveyor's budget to help subsidize those new positions. So at this point, we're just looking for and adopt the ordinance for the fee change.
Matt, do the fees cover the cost? I mean, some of them are doubling or tripling in cost.
Right.
Does that reflect the amount of time taken to produce these, the review that the surveyor has to do?
Yes. Yeah, and that was a big part of it. The review that the county surveyor does is a big part of it, but there's also kind of a secondary review that the deputy's going to do that really hasn't been part of in the past, that most counties, that's something that's kind of commonplace. So that's something we're going to start doing to provide an overall better service for the public. So yeah, the fees are where we think that they're going to cover the costs needed. But there are certain times where, you know, every year's a little different. You might have, you know, 20 partitions submitted one year. You might have 50 the next. It just depends on kind of the economy. But overall, average, that's what we're looking at, is we're hoping that it'll pretty much cover the costs.
Any other questions for Mr. Kenny? And so your recommendation is to go forth with this?
Yes. And I know Doug mentioned earlier that we were going to, Dave had a comment on something, but I wasn't sure if it was this or the other.
It was the other.
Okay.
And is there any public comment on the fee ordinance change while we're in public hearing mode? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and come out of public hearing mode at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance 2019-13.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And the second part to this was the restructure of the county surveyor. And what currently, we contract with the county surveyor at a set small amount. And he collects additional fees on top of that. What we're proposing to do is to set a fixed fee for the surveyor with a monthly certain amount and then also have some of the services provided internally by the deputy surveyor, which would be the reclassification of Matt's position. That is what the proposal was. Dave Crumbine thought he might want to be here to provide information you might want. He has been here in the past, so I don't know if we want to postpone this for a final decision or want to provide his...
Postpone the second part of that?
Basically, it's to approve the contract with Dave Crumbine for the county surveyor and then to reclassify the position.
But wasn't that provided in a work session?
Right, and Mr. Crumbine was here last time and did some discussion about.
And we had a work session on it?
Yeah, I'm okay moving forward on that. Do we need a second motion for that one?
Second.
No, we need a motion. I'll make the motion.
Boy, I thought you were looking for a second.
No, I was wondering if we needed to make a second motion on that. So...
We moved second.
Okay, moved and second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again.
I think I've got one more.
Another one? Oh, is the livestock road?
Yes.
Okay.
So the county's been looking at legalizing a portion of Northwest Livestock Road. It's just west of the current livestock grounds out there. It's kind of wedged between, on the east side of Westland Road and west of the east line of Section 25. It's about 500 feet in length. The goal behind this is that the current intersection of livestock and Westland is very near the intersection of ID4 and its westbound off-ramp. ODA has certain standards that require that, they're trying to enforce, that require intersections to be a little bit further than that. I think it's a little over 1,000 feet, 1,000 or 1,500 feet. In addition to that, there is some proposed development on the west side of Westland Road that we may be looking at a four-way intersection up there at some point in time. So the overall goal is to legalize this portion of livestock. And there is a little exhibit, if you scroll to the next page, give you an idea exactly where it's at, if that helps at all. But the highlighted portion is the portion that we're proposing to legalize. Virtually, the dedicated road follows the north-south section line in this little piece, which has existed in that location for well over 10 years, to be legalized. And so at this point, we're just looking for, to set the, you know, initialize the process, initiate the process, and then set a hearing for February 19th of this year to go over it in more detail at that time.
Wasn't this an item that was discussed in conjunction also with the location of the Amazon data center out in that area?
Yeah, I think this was part of that discussion.
Seems very familiar.
Yeah. It's been something that's needed to be done since the early 2000s, and it's just kind of gotten forgotten about, I think. So we want to go ahead and get it done before we have any more development in the area.
Yeah, how far is that from the exit, did you say?
It's probably, you know, 1,000, 1,500 feet or so.
Oh, the current?
Oh, the current one's a couple hundred feet at most.
And I think the board recently, the shaded area in gray was vacated.
Oh, yes, yeah, we did vacate that public road that was dedicated in that plat not too long ago.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of Order RD 2020-1.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Administrative Services payable.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dale and I with Administrative Services. Basically, the payable before you there for the elevators are required maintenance that we have to have in order to have an elevator in our building. So pretty cut and dry.
I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Quick.
And then the next one, the election payable, is for maintenance with the state. The state runs the centralized voter registration system, and it's split out the maintenance between the state and the 36 counties. And our portion is $7,776 that we pay to Oregon State to provide maintenance on that system.
Just an aside, unrelated, but will the states offer, the requirement, I guess, to pick up postage on the ballots that are mailed in? Will that have any effect on us at all?
So what we'll do is, we set up a separate meter so that the state is now supposed to pay on that meter. But usually, how a lot of that works is we have to pay it upfront and then we get reimbursed. And there should be no net cost to the county on that. It just might be the typical inconvenience of dealing with that, so.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the $7,776 to the Secretary of State.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Criminal Deputy Position.
Good morning and Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Sheriff Terry Rowan, Sheriff's Office. I think you guys are fully aware, we've met on this particular issue. As you know, community service pro and probation. We had a position that they contracted within our office to provide an apprehension deputy on his absconders. And the funding for that, because of the full funding formula for community corrections was not realized through this biennium. They were forced to sort of postpone or suspend that program with us. But in the background, we're contracting SRO, School Resource Officer duties, with Milton-Freewater School District that brings in a little over $90,000 in this fiscal year, about $94,000 in the following, and it goes up another percentage increase the following year after that. And so this is simply so Deputy Westmoreland, who was assigned in that position, can return to regular patrol duties without any layoff issues and then wait through this short legislative session to see if additional funding will be granted back to pro and probation. I think Dell Primmer and I both agree it's been a very viable program. Westmoreland's been very active in that. And as he and I have always said, if we can get these people tapped into services, the better outcomes we have. And so it's a very viable program. And so just seeking for approval to follow through with this plan. But at the same time, I wanted to sort of safeguard and emphasize that we are bringing in additional revenue into the sheriff's office through this SRO program. And my early intentions was if this pro and probation side of things were not being impacted negatively as they are, to backfill back into the road. And so my hopes would be that if we do regain some level of funding from the state to move forward on reappointing someone into that role that Westmoreland is vacating, that we be heard again on the backfill of a position so that the patrol division isn't negatively impacted by what we have going on.
Sheriff, let me make sure I understand this. Deputy Westmoreland was transferred some time ago to Community Corrections. And now, because the funding has been restricted to Community Corrections, there's no longer funding available through Community Corrections to pay for that deputy position. So we're transferring back into the sheriff's office this position. Is that right?
That's correct.
So if and when funding is restored to Community Corrections and they again call for a deputy position, will that be cutting back a deputy then? Since we're adding a deputy here, will we move another deputy back into Community Corrections? We won't fill that vacancy at that time, is that correct?
No, the ideal would be if funding were restored, we would identify someone to go back into that role through a contract with Community Corrections, so...
From an existing deputy position?
Correct.
But would that, when that occurs, that creates an opening for where that deputy was?
Correct.
Is it an intent at this point to add a deputy to fill that position when and if that occurs?
Commissioner Murdock is going to...
Why don't I go ahead? Since I, I'm not interrupting you, Chair, but since I was involved in this whole somewhat convoluted process. Actually, there's several things that were in motion here. One is the fact that we decided to have a school, Terry assigned a deputy to a school resource officer... Resource Officer position last fall, as early as like September or October. They presented a, a request to us to use that funding that we were receiving from Milton Free Water to fund, what, 75% of a deputy's position somewhere in that neighborhood. And so, we have, for the last two or three months, been contemplating whether or not we wished to create another criminal deputy position to replace Deputy Parsons, who went to Milton Free Water.
Correct.
After, during, during this interim period, we had worked out with, with Dale Primar that maybe we would continue funding out of reserves, his reserves, a position in, in Community Corrections. When Westmoreland requested a transfer, a transfer back into the sheriff's office, we kind of reconsidered the original proposal, and this motion actually is simply to create a new position in the sheriff's office, but using some of that funding to, to fund Deputy Westmoreland's position. But still, out there is the possibility that if, in fact, Dale receives funding for a deputy position in Community Corrections, that's a whole separate conversation, and we would, at that point in time, assuming he has enough money to do it.
Right.
To, to replace the position Westmoreland has vacated, if that makes sense, Bill. But that's, that's where all the pieces fit together.
Kind of like following the pea under the walnut shell sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, it is, but it's, it's, it makes it a whole lot cleaner and, and resolves the, answers for them and resolves the original request. At the same time, it precludes us from also any bumping that might have occurred in the, in the sheriff's office, which we did not want to do either. So, that's how all the pieces fell into place.
I would move approval.
I want to be for sure if Terry agrees with what I just...
Yep, I, I agree.
We've had this whole convoluted conversation.
We have, and, you know, it's, from my estimation, the information that I provided to all three of you early on, was that I felt that through this contract with, with Milton Free Water School District, it was sustainable for up to at least the next three years, this position. And so, this, this kind of makes it a little bit cleaner by allowing Westmoreland to return to the road for now. I think Dell and I's hope is that funding will be reestablished. I know that there's going to be a whole bunch of folks efforting that at the state level through the short session, and, and hopefully, that can get restored, and we can move ahead back with our agreement, so.
I think one other thing, a residual benefit, I don't know where it played into the equation, was the fact that, that I know four or five years ago, we got an awful lot of public input relative to, to coverage in the North County. Now, while Deputy Parsons is not patrolling the North County, the fact that Deputy Parsons is there all day, every day.
Right.
And certainly, there's an agreement, I assume, in place, that should there be an emergency in the North County, Deputy Parsons is still a deputy.
Correct.
And could be respond, could respond immediately. And it's been a long time since anybody in the North County, to my knowledge, has raised an issue about sheriff's office presence.
That, that is correct.
That, that coupled with the Athena Weston deal.
Right. I think it's all about putting deputies in pockets of the county that can be responsive to all county needs. I think that's important, just like with the Athena Weston, Weston contracts, those deputies are still there, so if they have to respond off of those contracts to some other emergency, they can. And in today's environment, we have probably three times the amount of resources up there than what we've ever had in the past. And I think it's, as you indicated, you know, we don't get a whole lot of complaints about not seeing a deputy up in that area, so. And we'd like that to be county-wide one day.
I wasn't proposing that yet.
Okay, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Who made the motion? You? Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
CDDP hours. Our agenda's so riveting, our fair people are still here. Ah, now they're... You two, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Kim Weizenflue, Program Manager, Community Developmental Disabilities Program. I'm before you to respectfully request that the operating hours for the Community Developmental Disabilities Program be allowed to change to operate 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Thursday, and on an appointment basis on Fridays.
So, move...
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
For the record, we had a work session on this matter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Public Health Temporary Employee.
Joe Fumara, Director for UCO Health. And I'm here today to ask for approval to go look for some temporary employees for our Environmental Health Inspection Program. One of our main inspectors is anticipating to use some leave in this next cycle coming up, and we'd like to not fall behind on our inspections during that case. This is something that some of the health departments across the state do from time to time, and we typically end up borrowing from other county health departments, as those are typically the people who are already trained and up on the current processes that allow for this to happen. We'd be funding this all out of our environmental health program funds that the restaurant fees pay for.
So, there'd be no impact to the general fund?
No impact to the general fund, anticipated.
Is this because there, of the number of inspections that are going on currently?
Yeah, I mean, so, in the, in the case of a calendar year, we typically conduct about 14 to 1,500 inspections on a regular basis. Many of those are required statutorily to happen. And when I'm looking at a scenario where I've got an inspector who's not going to be out doing work, I mean, you're, you're talking five to six inspections a day that don't take place. Bringing, you know, the ability to go out and bring somebody in, at least short-term, to at least kind of get us through that gap, is really important.
Joe and I, for the record, met last Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday, yeah.
To talk about this, and I recommended he put this on the agenda today, and after we deal with this, I'm going to ask him to stay at the microphone for one other thing to share, but, and I'll move that we prove this.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I have another point of privilege?
Please.
Since the Commissioners do not often get to hear from Public Health, would you just give a quick overview of what you shared with me about the statewide committee presence of your department?
Sure. So, as, as a Public Health Administrator, I participate on CLO, which is the Conference of Local Health Officials. Basically, all the administrators, along with some state representation. There are multiple committees of that conference, six in total, created as part of Public Health Modernization Framework. On those six committees, we have three people who are represented, one of which who represents the co-chair for that committee, Amanda Wallsborne, our Community Health Supervisor, and then Alicia Southwick, the Deputy Director, sits on one of the committees, and I sit on one myself. And we've been continually engaging in other, other subcommittees of those groups, and, you know, subcommittees that get put together for doing assessments of how modernization is working, and how some of these funds are being sent out to the counties and so forth. So, we've, we've been taking a very active role, trying to help influence how some of these decisions are being made.
That's fantastic. Congratulations, that's, that's great.
It's very good. They, I think, the fact that they want our presence, and I think have asked for our presence.
In, in a couple of instances, we have been asked to participate on some of these. There, there's a sense, a lot of times, from the state level, that I hear that, that not all in Eastern Oregon are necessarily interested in participating. And we're happy to participate, but we're also not very quiet when we do so, so.
Good for you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners' reports. Mr. Elfring.
I have nothing new, having just come back from vacation. Stirred something up, how's that?
There you go, works for me. And I have coffee left, so Commissioner Murdock, go ahead.
No, I'm fine.
Wow, all right. With that, we are in adjournment. Thank you very much.